Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the holiday edition of the Planning Commission. We are meeting on December fourteenth, twenty twenty one. And before we begin, we'll do a roll call and all that fun stuff. But as you know, given the current conditions, this is a virtual meeting. And of course, under the governor's orders, you know, these are these are virtual meetings. These are teleconference meeting procedures. And of course, we will take any oral public comments during the teleconference. Comments can be made during oral communication. If you haven't emailed, you can also email planning@cupidino.org as well. And then, of course, we'll be doing this through Zoom. So with that, I'm going to go to roll call, put that to Sarah. Sarah, all yours, to roll call for today's meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Capil? Commissioner Mari Patla?
Yes.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sharf? Chair Wong?
Present, so. Okay, welcome, everybody. Before we do oral communications and the agenda and approval minutes, I want to make sure we take some time to introduce someone. Chris, please go ahead and we'll make some introductions and get folks in here.
Yeah, great. So thank you, everyone. So I just wanted to take a second to introduce the members of the commission and the public to Michael Wu, who has recently joined the city as Senior Assistant City Attorney.
He had problems hearing.
Is anybody else having problems hearing me? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and hopefully Michael can figure it out. So he's recently joined the city as Senior Assistant City Attorney. He has joined us from the city of Berkeley, where he was a deputy city attorney for over twenty of years and a valued colleague of mine there. And we're happy to have him here. We are in a transition process where he will be taking primary responsibility for supporting the Planning Commission and Planning Commission's staff with respect to these meetings. And so we're obviously both here tonight, but I just wanted to introduce him and and make sure that everybody on the commission and members of the public were aware of the transition. So and of course, to welcome him to Cupertino. So so thank you, Michael.
Hey, Michael, welcome. So Chris, is he the one that Berkeley mayor was complaining about that we are pulling?
The Mayor's Chief of Staff, yes. That's that's that is indeed Michael. So we stole him from Berkeley.
Well, Michael, welcome. Congratulations for being here and thank you. And it's good to have a risk management folk person with a risk management background. We'll need that as well. And of course, thank you for being here. So welcome.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Very cool. And then before we begin on oral communications and minutes as well, Pew, we want to take the time to recognize some of our wonderful staff that's been with us and some have left as well. And Pew, can you share with us some of those names and some of the folks and some of their accomplishments throughout the year?
Sure. So we've actually had three planners leave us this year. We've had, most recently, we've had Eric Serrano, who was a senior planner with us. He joined as he joined a private planning consultancy firm after having worked at Cupertino for seven years. He joined the city as an associate planner and has worked on multiple projects, including the Marina Project, Public Storage, Canyon Crossings, and the Dark Sky Ordinance. I also wanted to recognize Lauren Ninkovich, Assistant Planner, who was with the city for a little over a year and a half. She worked on many single-family residential projects. And it was quite apparent that she was she had a bright career ahead of her in planning. But the pandemic helped her realize that she wanted to be closer to her family in Oregon. And so she moved on from Cupertino. We also had Victoria Ortiz, Assistant Planner, who joined the city during the pandemic. And so it was a hard transition. She came up to us from San Diego. But I think the pandemic gave her the space to kind of figure out that she had other interests in planning. And she she moved on from Cupertino as well. But she was also working on single-family homes and working on the myriads of building permits that the planning staff has been inundated with now that more people have been staying at home and they realize that they want to improve their properties, not just residential projects, but also commercial ones as well. We wish all of them the very best. And finally, and not least of all, we also lost our longtime administrative assistant or Deputy Board Clerk Beth Eben, who retired earlier this year. She worked for the city for nineteen years, sixteen of them here with the Planning Department. And, you know, wanted to recognize all the people that have kind of moved on from the city. We've lost many planners, but we've also gained some new planners. So you'll be seeing many of them in the many projects that they'll bring to the Planning Commission. Some of them include Luke Connolly, who's joined us as a senior planner. We've also had A.J. Haas, who's joined us as an assistant planner, and Brienne Harkusha, who's an associate planner with the city. With that, I just pass it over to you, Chair Wong.
Hey, thanks a lot. Congratulations to all those folks. This is what we call the great refactoring, as people figure out their work-life balance and figure out what they want to do next. But congratulations on bringing some new folks into the Cupertino Planning Department. So with that, let's go to the minutes. So, yeah, so we are going to minutes. Subject approval, the November twenty-third Planning Commission meeting minutes. Recommended action, approve the November twenty-third Planning Commission minutes. Commissioners get a chance, if you haven't read the minutes, let's take a look a moment, go through them. And if somebody has, you know, make the motion to approve the minutes, please go ahead and feel free to do so. Also got a quick note from Vice Chair Sharf. He's trying to get in, having some bandwidth issues, so we'll see if he joins in. All right. Anybody ready to make a motion to approve the minutes? Anything anyone catch?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, cool. Any comments, any discussions, any corrections that we need to make? They look right. Okay, with that, all right, let's call for a vote.
Commissioner Capil? Commissioner Mari Patla?
Yes.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sharf? Chair Wong?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero two.
Okay. All right, with that, we're going to go to oral communications. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. You've got three minutes, and in most cases, state laws will prohibit prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to matters not on the agenda. So with that, let's see if we have any oral communications and let's turn to our public. And if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. We've got Jennifer Griffin. Jennifer, go ahead.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone. Thanks to Pew for talking about all the staff members we've had. I just always am so glad and grateful for all the people that we've had working for the city. It's it's been a very, very difficult two years. Cupertino has lots of adventures, but we're always very, very glad for all the staff that we've had. And good luck to all the staff members who have departed. I'm sorry, that sounds bad, who have moved on to other positions. We wish them well and happy holidays to everybody. Stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I don't see any other hands raised. And if you're going, if you have a comment, raise your hands. We'll give you some time. Any written communications, Sarah? Okay, we have no written communications as well. Okay, with that, let's go on to our main agenda, item number two. Okay, public hearing, item number two. Consider development and architectural and site approval permits that would allow the replacement of seven storage buildings with three new buildings between one and three stories in height to allow for a hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred forty-five square feet storage facility. Consider a fence exception request to allow truck vehicular gates and a tree removal permit request to allow the removal and replacement of eight protected trees. The applicant numbers, as you can see, DP twenty nineteen oh five, ASA twenty nineteen oh five, EXC twenty nineteen oh four, and TR twenty nineteen oh four eight. And it's our application, Emilia Samudio, and from Jordan Architects. And the location is at ten six five five Mary Avenue. Recommended action, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, in accordance with draft resolutions, which are in attachments one through four, recommends that the city council, one, find the project exempt from CEQA, two, approve the development permit, three, approve the architectural and site approval, four, approve the fence exception, and five, approve the tree removal permit. So let's go over to staff. Pew, all yours, and just can hand it to John.
I'm going to do a quick transition to John here, who's going to be presenting this project. Thank you, John, for stepping in at the last minute on taking this project on.
Thank you, Pew, and that was quick. Okay. So thank you, Chair Wong, and thank you, Pew. Again, John Marti, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. So give me two seconds to get my.
And while you're doing that, if we get a chance, we can promote Vice Chair Sharf. He's in the attending list.
Right. Can everyone hear me okay? All right, great. So hi, again, so this is the, as as introduced by Chair Wong, this is the lock and store slash Berry Self-Storage site on Mary Avenue. I use both names, lock and store is the previous name, and Berry Self-Storage is the proposed name going forward. And again, the subject was already read by the by the chair. So the project location is an existing, approximately four-acre site, which has seven single-story storage, storage facilities, storage buildings, excuse me, within an existing, again, facility, surrounded by a mix of uses, particularly on the east side, it's a single-family residential. On the south is the city Cupertino's courtyard. And on the west and north, you have highways eighty-five and highway two eighty, respectively. I have one more thing. You also have the Mary Avenue Bridge, which will be which we will be discussing a little further going forward, especially when we talk about the the easement on that side of the property. So the proposed changes, again, is the construction of three new buildings between one and three stories totaling one hundred fifty-three thousand three hundred twenty square feet, which is approximately ninety-five thousand square feet more than was there already. Replacement of the existing manager's apartment and office sales area, both of which are of equal size of twelve hundred square feet. Construction of a new trash enclosure. Replacement of an electronic vehicle gate. New six-story, I'm sorry, six-story, six-foot tall wrought iron fence located along the eastern and southern property lines. And update landscaping along the front edge of southern property line, including a large landscape area between the proposed structures and condominiums to the east. So what we have here are the existing buildings and proposed. This will give you a nice bird's eye view and perspective of what's what the changes are. Again, you can see the seven single-story buildings on the left and the proposed on the right. So throughout this presentation, I will be referring to certain buildings by letters. Building A, which is right in the middle, is the three-story building. Building B, which is a two-story building along the southern edge. And Building C, which is the two-story, between one- to two-story buildings along the the eastern edge of the site, which includes the office and manager's unit. And then you have Building D, which is the existing facility, which will just be upgraded, but won't be demolished and will be the last remaining building that's going to be on the site. Okay, so Building A, here's the is just basically a perspective of it from from the north. As you can see, the the tallest portions of the building is about thirty feet with a parapet acting as an architectural feature to to mask any type of rooftop equipment, adding another foot on top of that. But generally, it's about thirty feet above above grade and, again, located right in the middle of the of the of the project site. Building B is, again, it's generally around, I would say, approximately twenty-three to twenty-six feet as highest points along the southern edge adjacent to the city Cupertino's courtyard. And again, the, you know, when when the applicant came in to discuss the proposal with staff, one of the one of the comments that came in through one of the public outreach efforts and also from us is to have the highest buildings in the middle of the project to kind of not not to overwhelm the the public, especially with a view along the right of way. So it would be a gradual change to go up rather than have the tallest tallest portion along the right of way, focus them on the middle of the site. Then we have Building C, that's right here. This is the building that's closest to the right of way along the closest to the Mary Avenue Bridge Trail and as well as the proposed new trail on site along the eastern edge. This is a great perspective because it kind of shows you what someone would see coming down Mary, going up Mary Avenue in that area, in the gardening gate area. And so this gives, again, the colored portion is the closest building, Building Building C. But in the rear, sorry, in the rear, you can see what Building A would look like. And plus Building B from Mary Avenue. Development standards, one of the things about BQ Mini Storage, which is which is the zoning district, is that there aren't set setbacks within that planned development zoning. So what we did was, what what staff and the and the and the applicant had done was work together to find at least, you know, the the great greatest setbacks we can without being as intrusive to the neighboring single-family residential zones and whatnot. So we found that front setback of forty feet was was best for the from that front property line as well as a side five feet that's along the the southern border, southern property line, excuse me, with against the the courtyard. The rear has a zero-foot setback. However, that's the existing building, which will not be removed or demolished, just upgraded. One of the other standards as well that we that's not part of this use class in nineteen one-two-four parking is stored facilities. So there was a parking study, a traffic study that was completed and found that twenty twenty spaces would be sufficient for this type of use. However, the applicant's proposing it for forty and double what what the the traffic study has recommended as being sufficient to for the traffic generation and the parking generation or parking demand for this site. Connectivity. So one of the one of the conditions of approval for this is that there will be a twenty-foot wide easement to the city for future multi-use trail facility along the east side of the property. This to connect the, I believe it's going to be called the Nipper Sarah Trail that that goes adjacent to two eighty from east to west. And this trail, in this twenty-foot portion, twenty-foot wide portion would eventually connect that hundred percent trail up into the Mary Avenue Bridge. So you have that good connection from going east or, you know, from, you know, from Wolf Road or Danza Boulevard, where do you connect on to going up up into Mary Avenue Bridge? And well, I'll have an exhibit to show you where that's going to be located. Ingress egress easement for trail maintenance, access construction easement, access easement. And the ease, again, the easement is intended to provide access point to a future I two eighty trail, which I believe is called the Sarah Trail. Pew, you can correct me if I'm wrong with the name of that. There we go. Got that one right. Okay, so here, so here's the site, the site plan right here. The blue arrow right here shows the direction of the trail. As you can see, if you can see my cursor, here's the 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 future trail along the the drainage by two eighty going from east to west and then and then verging south towards Mary Avenue. And this is where that twenty-foot wide easement would be. As you can see, the red arrow is the direction as the Mary, the existing Mary Avenue Trail to the Mary Avenue Bridge would be right there. So you would have this connection right here. Tree removal replacement. So there's eight protected development trees on site that include a red iron bark, eucalyptus, Chinese pistash, and a tree of heaven. The applicant's proposing to replace it with seven thirty-six-inch box blood good London plane and one twenty-four-inch box Chinese pistash. These would be adjacent to the future twenty-foot easement, twenty-foot wide easement on the eastern portion of the site. The fence, the fence exception is to replace the existing security gate. The gate is located approximately sixty-five feet from the property line between Buildings B and C, right at the entrance. Environment review, why is it EIR, excuse me? Project is categorically exempt from requirements of CEQA as an infill development project. Fifteen three three two, CEQA guidelines fifteen three three two. We do have our environmental consultant here who put together the by the this the category exemption memo, Terry from Placeworks, Terry McCracken from Placeworks. And conclusions, our staff recommends approval of the project. Since the project condition of approval addressed all concerns related to proposed development and all the fines for approval of the proposed project assisted with chapters nineteen one five six, nineteen one six eight, nineteen four eight, fourteen point one eight of the Cupertino Municipal Code may be made. One correction, again, this will be a recommendation for approval to city council. This will have to go to city council. One correction to development permit resolution, condition number eleven. The cross-out language was was inadvertently added in there. It should read what is underlined. So this portion of the condition reads, the applicant shall obtain lead silver certification or an alternative reference standard in accordance with the ordinance since the project proposes adding more than fifty thousand square feet. And that's in accordance, that's consistent with our chapter sixteen municipal code. The next step is Plan Commission's recommendation we forward to city council. Tendedly scheduled for January eighteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, excuse me, still twenty twenty-one, for its decision on the project. City council's decision will be final unless reconsidered within ten days of the decision. And that is my presentation.
Thanks, John. Let's see if anybody has any questions to jump in. If not, I will start.
My hand raised, but anyway.
Go ahead. Vice Chair Sharf, great to see you. Please go ahead and we'll go to Commissioner Mari Patla.
I just wondered, why is there a fence exception required if we're just replacing the existing gate with a new gate? What what's the exception?
So my understanding is that the the existing gate was never approved with an exception. Our our fence, our fence ordinance requires that any type of mechanical gate requires a fence exception. So this essentially would retroactively legalize the one that's there. And then, well, not the one that's there, but at least go through the proper channels, proper process to approve a mechanical gate.
Okay, thank you.
Nice little Ameristar impasse gate there. Commissioner Mari Patla, go ahead.
Yeah, so the exception clarification was one of my questions. The other one is, so this one, it's a one-story building right now on a lot that's entitled to go up, you know, forty-five feet or is thirty feet the max allowed on that lot?
Right, thirty foot is the max on that lot.
Okay, and and we are going to stick to that thirty feet and, you know, build a three-story storage facility?
For the for the main building in the middle, correct.
So so it's because that's how it goes from, you know, fifty-nine thousand square feet, you know, built area to, you know, three times, three floors, roughly, okay?
Approximately.
And so the only exception being sorry is, you know, the one that you just described about the gate, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so I, yeah, no, I ride on that bridge, you know, every week. So right now, you know, what exists there is not visible, right? Like, you know, you just go past that, you know, it just looks like, you know, an hour facility. So I don't know if this will be visible, but I'd like to see it. So, yeah, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Mari Patla. Anyone else? All right, I've got two questions. One is related to parking. Currently, there's about twenty-nine spots. Seems to be mostly RVs and trailers parked there, could be up to fifty-eight spots of parking. And my question is really, what what is the operator and owner going to be doing in terms of the RVs and the parking situation there? And then the second one is the tree placement. And this is just a pet peeve of mine. I have no freaking idea why we keep planting trees underneath power lines. That's probably the worst combination and I ever see. And I walked through that facility, walked up and down the Mary Trail. I'm like, these trees are like going to be freaking under power lines again. So I'm hoping we can minimize that because, you know, we keep planting trees. They keep consuming tons of water. I know we need trees. But like, when they get stuck in the middle of a storm, take down power? That's like, we're asking for, and it's like a self-inflicted wound. So I'm just trying to think if we can just avoid placement of those replacement trees under any power lines. And there is a big ass power line coming through there. So that's why I'm saying that. So. Anybody can answer those two questions and we can go to the applicant too, so.
Sure, I think I think your first question could be better answered by the applicant as the operator in terms of what they propose on doing for the with the RVs. I mean, if, you know, it's, I, I, I'm hoping people won't be living in them. That's that's the hope, you know.
We got that on, we got that by the target, but yeah, okay.
But I get, I think they'll be the ones that the better answer that one. In terms of the trees, you know, it's within the plant commission's purview to recommend to council that, you know, staff, you know, consider, you know, removing.
Consider safe, yeah, safer placement of the trees not underneath the power lines so we don't get into any kind of issues with down power lines in the future, just making it easier for everybody. So, okay. Sounds good. Can we go to the applicant? Who's the applicant? Is that Tom Buchanan or?
I actually got three of us here, Todd, Todd and myself. Yeah, thanks. Thank you for having us. Appreciate it. And then Bruce Jordan is our architect as well. So all three of us are here from the application side. So those existing RV parking stalls are actually under the high voltage power lines that are out there. And there's a, there's an eighty-foot easement that PG&E currently has. So we're not allowed to build any structures in that easement. So that's why the RV parking is located where it is. So unfortunately, there's not really much we can do with that area other than keep it RV parking. So that's that's our current, our current intention, unless PG&E moves those lines at some point, which I don't ever see happening. But we're we're happy to move trees around. We do it all the time to keep them from, you know, growing underneath those lines. The good news about those lines is they're, as you know, way up in the air. So even if we do plant trees, it's probably, you know, hopefully in our lifetime, but maybe not our lifetime before it gets up near those. So we're we're happy to keep them trimmed as well if we need to do that.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Vice Chair Sharf? Thank you, Curtis. Vice Chair Sharf?
All right. So Chair Wong raised a good point. What is preventing people from living in RVs there? I know we're starting to see this issue throughout Cupertino now. We're and we have not yet passed an ordinance on it regarding people living in RVs on the street. And I believe, if I recall correctly, this storage facility actually had somebody pass away in one of the units many years ago. So we need to ensure that people are not living there.
In the storage units or in the RV, sorry.
In either one, but I believe the death was in a storage unit.
I think the death was in a storage unit, but let's clarify that.
You, you guys know more than I do about the the death. We've, we've only had this facility for for three years. They didn't tell us about the ghost out there when we purchased it. But anyways, we, we like to pride ourselves on our our nine facilities in the Bay Area that that we manage them with with high security and and we we keep control of our tenants. You know, each each unit is a tenant of ours. So we, we like to know what they're doing and what they're storing. So so we definitely keep an eye. We have security cameras all around the facility. So we've never had an issue with with anybody living on our on our site. So we'll, we'll continue that operation on this site as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Bruce Jordan, but let's go to Pew first. Pew, is there something you want to jump in?
I just did want to clarify that in the BQ zone, the uses that are allowed are the ones that we're authorizing. In this particular case, the use that we're authorizing is a storage facility. And we're not aware of any uses authorizing the storage of RV vehicles on the property.
Okay, good to know. All right, we'll throw that back. We'll go to Bruce Jordan, please go ahead. So and you're on mute, if you can unmute yourself, please. Spacebar or the speaker sign.
Good evening. This is Chairman, Members of the Commission. My name is Bruce Jordan. I'm the architect for the project. And first off, I'd like to very much compliment your city staff and planners and working with us all the way through this to resolve a number of issues I think we've successfully done. So I will, I visited the city as we started designing. And one of the first things that occurred to me is is to screen all the loading activities. So we took great care in in doing that and protecting the residents across the street on the east side. And we knew that it was going to be best to put the the center building as the high building, as the Building C, when you're in a car or walking, it's going to tend to screen off the top of that building just due to the sightlines. So I have measured some of the distances from Building A, which is the three-story building, to the property line, which is ninety-two feet at at the minimum. So it's quite. to the property line, which is ninety-two feet at at the minimum. So it's quite a bit. And it's a hundred and ninety-seven feet from the face, the east face of A to the curb across the street. So that's a long distance. There's a lot of separation to those residents there. So building C will act as an acoustical screen. It's going to keep things quiet. It's going to screen all the loading activity. So it's all contained on site. We're not going to have any light bleed over. We're not going to need that. We will have light. It'll be all cut out fixtures and so forth. The facility will be closed at night. It's going to be typified by very low trip generation. So we have literally designed hundreds of these next to residential communities. And a lot of the residential communities come back to us afterwards and say, well, that's one of the most quiet neighbors I've ever had. So we know that this land use works very compatibly with with residential. We have a little over half an acre, I think it's point five, six acres of landscaping. So we got quite a bit of screening going on here. And we feel that that that's the right way to do it and create that streetscape along Mary there. All of our areas that need elevators to go up to the second and third floor are closed and tucked under the buildings. You don't have trucks out there visible and so forth. They're all tucked into you know, the loading areas that are covered and screened. So keeps the noise to a minimum, keeps the visuals best and so forth. So I think after working with the planners and paying attention to everything that's going on around the site, I think this is the right solution for it. And I would like to agree, we design a lot of RV facilities. And one of the things that's very strong with management, we do not allow anybody to live there. No manager that I know of does. The security is very strong. The managers spend their days, you know, witnessing what's going on on the site. They can see those telltale signs and they just don't let that happen. Well, that's not going to happen either in the storage unit or in the RV. Not, it's not going to happen. So with that, I'll close. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to to answer them.
Okay, no problem. Vice Chair.
Oh, sorry. I guess maybe I misunderstood when Pew said that one of the uses of this was not for RV storage. I think I'm hearing some some different story here. So is there going to be storage for RVs in in that facility or not?
Yes, in the easement area. As there is now.
So so I'm going to jump in briefly. I mean, that so 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 the RV storage is an existing use of the property. You know, and I I don't, you know, we would have to to look at exactly, you know, why that use was allowed. I don't have that information in front of me now, but it doesn't appear that it would be directly impacted by this application, which is leaving that building in the northwest side of the site next to the RV storage in place and primarily, you know, and primarily impacting the other buildings on the, you know, remaining.
Okay.
About three quarters of the site.
So what was it that you said earlier? Can you repeat that?
Certainly. So at this point, the application is mainly for the replacement of the buildings. The RV uses are where they are, but we have not reviewed the previous approvals to see whether RV parking was approved as a use on the site.
Yeah, real quick. I mean, just for everyone to see, I mean, this is what I'm looking at here. This is the RV area. You got some boats, you got some RVs, some cars parked here. That's what I was asking about before. So just so you guys know. So anyways, yeah.
Right. I mean, I I'm not opposed to that. I'd rather have them stored there than, you know, in front of people's houses. So what I just wondered about. And I know in some cities that Cupertino is not one of them, but I think in Saratoga, you can't even park an RV in front of your house. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions for the commissioners? Commissioner Saxena, please go ahead.
Yeah, just to understand, even though it's sort of not related to the permit of the building, shouldn't we be streamlining and making sure that the parking also is like approved as a part of this plan or because it's like, I'm just curious about whether we should be linking those two or whether we can completely unlink those two.
So I I think that the so you know, again, again, I don't have exact information about the legal status, the parking. If it is a an existing use, you know, it could either be an approved use or it could be an existing use that is you know, you know, vested regardless of whether it is approved or not. And my understanding is that, you know, is is the application before you is not to change that particular use of the area under the power lines.
That's correct.
And and so that that is going to remain the same. And my understanding of that is the legal status will remain the same, regardless of what action the the commission takes tonight.
Vice Chair Sharf, thank you, Chris.
Failed to lower my hand, but it's lowered now.
Okay.
If I could just clarify on the parking, you know, we did a parking demand analysis based on the IP generation rate for self-storage and the peak PM hour came up to nineteen vehicles. So the city's position was have twenty-one parking parking spaces. And we have forty-one. We have way more than than is required. And we have several projects larger than this all over the Bay Area with less parking. And there's no problem. This is more than adequate parking for this facility.
Bruce, Bruce, actually, let's let's not, let me make sure that we're not confusing issues here. There is additional parking that you guys have placed there, which is above what's required, and that's the forty some parking spaces. There is the RV parking that's in the easement that's not being considered in this application that I counted, which was the twenty-nine parking spaces that are can double up. Right? So so everybody knows what we're looking at here. So so they're they're two different things there. I just want to make sure that's clarified and everybody has that there. So. Commissioner Madi Pala, go ahead.
So so John, can you put up the diagram? I want to see where the the forty parking spaces are going, right? So it's not clear from the diagrams that I've seen.
Oh, sorry. Here we go. It's right here. It's these areas here.
Okay, so it's going to be along the
Mary side.
The Mary side, you know, where we go up on the bridge and so on, right next to it.
And you could even park there and walk through the bridge. No, it's kidding. Hope you don't do that. This might want to gate your parking.
The the easement that we are getting, right?
Correct.
Yes. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, with that, there's doesn't look like any other questions on the commission's side yet. And let's put it over to our public. So let's turn it over to our public. We've got Tom Buchanan. I think you're on with the team. And then, of course, Jenny Griffin. So Jennifer Griffin, Tom, please go ahead. You've got three minutes. Oh, Tom, if you can unmute, you've got three minutes. If you can't unmute in time, I'll give you like ten seconds. I will go over to Jennifer Griffin.
Hey, you got me? Hey, sorry, sorry. Thank you so much. And and good evening. Tom Buchanan, my house is on Nathanson Avenue. It, the back of my house butts directly onto the the wonderful bike path that you guys put in there. Four things. First off, a thirty foot building behind my house there is quite jarring to me. I noticed in the drawing that it does have, or it appeared to have windows on it. So of course, I'm first of all, thinking about just seeing that thirty foot tall building back behind my house and be that how that building having windows where people could be looking back at me and into my backyard. I believe the architect mentioned that that it will be closed at night. I would want to verify that. And and having something there that's a twenty-four hour access would not be desirable to me. I'm also a little bit confused about those parking spaces that you just showed that are going to be right up on the the bike path there. And who's parking there? What are those for? And I'm kind of running fast. I don't know if I'm just running through my list here. I don't know if I should be allow time to respond for each one or whatever. Last thing, protect protected trees. What does that mean? Maybe it's a small thing, but I mean, they're protected, but yet now they're not protected because it it's no longer convenient for us to protect something. I I find that a little bit unsettling. That's it.
Oh, you have more time, but okay.
That's it. I mean, that's it, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Tom. And we'll get to some of those questions. Do we have any responses from anybody regarding the protected trees in the parking? So and then we'll run out the time here.
The protected trees are being replaced. And this is all done way above board by larger trees. So these are all be replaced by mature trees. So we're not losing any trees. And and the parking, that is parking up against Mary there, the bike path, that is for the self-storage patrons. That will have nothing to do with the bike path or anything like that. So that has nothing to do with it. And the thirty foot height is really what the gentleman mentioned. As as I mentioned, is a hundred and hundred and ninety-seven feet from the curb on the east side of Mary. So it's a long distance and it's screened by the one story building and the trees that are there. So it's going to be very buffered. And it's not unusual, even in Cupertino, to have a two story home that's twenty-five to twenty-eight feet. So this is very much in the scale of a two story home. So this is not particularly hot. And given the distance away from the residents, we think it's going to have minimal impact, if any at all.
Okay, real quick, just so people can see, here's where the parking lot is, and it's not in the trail. So just so people know that. So just to clarify that, so everyone has that. Okay, Vice Chair Sharf, you have a question?
One one thing I
one one last thing that I'd I'd like to address is the windows. The windows that are facing the residential are are solid windows. They're spandrel windows. So there's going to be no loss of privacy to the residential area.
Also, this is not a twenty-four hour facility. So it does close down in the evening. People can access their units, but they're not able to access after, call it nine o'clock. Eight o'clock.
Thank you for the clarification. We'll go to Jennifer Griffin. And then Vice Chair Sharf, did you have a question? Or you're just?
My question was about the windows. Why were there windows in a storage facility? But
I think there's architectural features, right?
Yeah, I think it's just architectural. Thank you.
It's spandrel glass to break up the facade of the building. There's no loss of of privacy to the residential areas who have spandrel windows.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to Jennifer Griffin. You have three minutes. Welcome, Jennifer Griffin.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Yes, now this interesting discussion. My first question was, in terms of the forty parking places, I'm really glad that the company has decided to have more parking. I think it's a really good idea, especially Cupertino is quite sensitive about it. Now, will this, I think they stated that this parking was going to be for people attached to using the storage unit, coming in, et cetera. Will will the parking spaces be, will it say there that they're reserved for for park for the storage unit? Because you might have people coming in to walk on the trail that might just inadvertently go there and park. So would that be a quote toe away zone? Might it be better that the parking spaces be secured within the facility? I think that happens a lot of times that they would be within the facility so that it would be people that were coming in that had units, et cetera. I'm not really sure about that. The other thing is, in terms of the windows that were on the building, I understand that, yes, they probably are an architectural feature because to have a building that large that would just be a straight face of gray stucco stone, et cetera, would probably be quite jarring. Having having the building broken up with types of fixed windows, I'm sure people, they may even, people aren't able to look out of them. I think they're strictly an architectural feature. And having something like that on a building that size, I think is a really good idea. I don't live next to it, so I comment on on that. But looking at it from a distance, I think it's nice to have it broken up. The other question I had was what is, in terms of the trail dedication for the future Juniper Sarah trail, how far is that? Is that actually on the four acres that belong to the storage facility? Or is that land being dedicated as an easement? And how close is that to the storage facility? Would you have people potentially being able to come over the fence to get into the storage facility from the future trail? Thank you.
No, great questions. And let's get a clarification. I believe the parking spots are within the enclosed security fence. Is that correct, Curtis?
Yeah, so I I could speak to the the way a storage facility works is new customers come up to the the storage facility and right off of Mary, there's a handful of parking stalls that will be clearly marked as Bay Area self-storage parking only, so that they're not for the trail. And keep in mind, these are right next to the manager's office. So the manager will be keeping an eye on these stalls so that, you know, general public doesn't try to park there and and bike across the path. And then all the other stalls are behind a gated or behind the the locked gate. So you need to have a code and be a customer to be able to get in that gate to be able to use those other stalls. So those are just people visiting their existing unit in our facility. So those won't be used by the public.
Okay, thank you. And a question back regarding the trails and the trail dedication.
Yeah, so the trail, the trail dedication or easement is is on the side slope of the property. It is on our property. And, you know, if and when this trail does come, that that easement is is ready for that trail. The trail will be built as part of the Juniper Sarah trail that Cupertino is building, but it will be on this easement on our property.
Okay, thank you for clarification there. Commissioner, we're done with open public comments. If anyone has a comment, you've got ten seconds to respond with a hand. So raise your hand if you've got a question. So going once, going twice. With that, we'll take it back to the commission. Okay, let's go back to the commission. Commissioner Madi Pala, please go ahead.
Yeah, so the trail is meant, so is that going to be outside the fence of the property? Like, you know, when you guys
Yes, it is.
You know, have a fence around the property, the trail is going to be outside, right? So
Correct.
Okay, that's good. So Ray, you flashed up a diagram. So could you bring it up again?
Sure, this one, correct?
Yeah, so so can you?
Give me a second here. Let me zoom out of it. So here we go. All right, go ahead.
So so this one, right, so the thirty thirty feet tall building, right? So can we make sure that trees that we plant along the east side closer to the, right, yeah, so along the the trail and all that, right? So can we make sure that, you know, those trees are tall enough so that, you know, these residences, you know, that you are showing on the right side, the rectangle, right? So it's good that, no, they they don't have any loss of privacy because, you know, nobody's living in these buildings. So nobody's going to be peeking at their backyards and all that. But at the same time, these residents, you know, when they wake up in the morning and go to the yard, we don't want them to be looking at, you know, concrete structure, right? So so it'd be a good idea to have, you know, tall trees along this side so that, you know, there's like, they're looking at the green stuff and only go when they go to their backyards. Just just a thought.
If I can clarify the landscape plan, clarifies the new mature trees being planted on both sides of the bike easement. So they will be on both sides. People help screen.
I think it's also, I'll I'll make one more note that I think is important to note is on that side of the property, our our property slopes from south to north considerably. And then down from south to north towards two eighty. And then the bike path slopes significantly up from south to north. So you've got opposing slopes like this. And then the three story building sits there. So those residents are already buffered by probably two thirds of that building just from the slope up of that bike path. If you're standing in their backyard, you can see all that bike path. It's hard to see in that angle. But that path goes up considerably because it needs to get up and above two eighty.
Yeah, it looks like this, if I remember. I was going through the bike path and this is kind of what you're looking at. So for those who aren't there, so it is an interesting slope, so.
I think this is on the other side.
That's on the other side. I gotta get closer. That's on the other side. I gotta get closer to the side.
You want to come to the side, yeah.
Yeah, it's not letting me do that.
Can you go right there at the corner of Mary? Yeah, like right there?
Yeah, let's go right there. Yeah.
Yeah, so see how?
That's what you're looking at.
I don't know if you can see it sloping up, but if you?
Yeah, yeah, so I can see it, yeah. No, I go upon this, you know, very often. I write that down.
See that slope up? There you go. That's a good angle.
This thing comes up, and the other side goes slopes down. Yeah, we see that, so.
Yeah, so my ask is, you know, the trees along these, you know, the wall, you know, on the left side, you know, would be a good idea, you know, so that, you know, the residents here in these houses, you know, they're not waking up and looking at no concrete structure.
Yeah, and I think the residents here, I think, are basically one-story homes as well. So they're not really going to be massively impacted in their backyard. And plus, you've got the tree protection, hopefully, from here. So this is kind of what they're looking at, so. I do have a question about glass and separation for the, my only concern on the glass is, like, sunrise, the glass might just reflect into someone's homes, but noticing that these are just like one-story, hopefully, that's not the case. So, you know, if that's the case, you might just want to go with, like, a black frame of something. Something that would just give you the same effect, but just something to think about.
Yeah, we have no intention of selecting reflective glass, so that won't be the case. We'll be sensitive to that.
Okay, good, good, so, okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? If not, we can, someone can make a proposal to approve and ideally approve all, I think, five items, which would be make a resolution to find the project exempt from CEQA, approve the development permit, approve the architectural and site approval, approve the fence exception, and approve the tree removal permit. We can do it all at once. We could do it separately, and that's kind of the process.
I'll make a motion to approve the development permit, DP 201905, the architectural and site approval, ASA 201905, the fence exception, EXC 201904, the tree removal permit, TR 2019048, and find the project exempt from CEQA.
Anybody have a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a second. All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I think the only clarification I wanted a little bit more is about the tree removal thing and why that comes into the picture, and what's the governing law on legacy trees? Maybe the staff can talk a bit more.
Sure, and I'll speak about the findings for this, findings that we made for the tree removal permits. It inhibits development to its full potential on the site. So in this case, existing trees would be in the same location as the proposed trail would be as well. So that, within that easement, that 20-foot easement, you would have two or three, or maybe even four of those trees to locate, to be located within that slope easement and future trail easement as well. So what this does is allows that future trail access altogether, and allows us to plant more of a uniformed variety of trees to be consistent along the trail. And again, you know, it is within the planning commission's purview to suggest a species, as Chair Wong had done earlier regarding the power lines, if you see fit.
Crape myrtles for everyone. Just kidding. Let's not do that. But yeah, no, I do have a question about the trees. I mean, the current trees are a mess. They're all over the map, and they really do look like they need some pruning, so I do understand that. There's no legacy heritage trees there, is that correct? Just to verify.
Yeah, there's no, again, coastlive oaks or D-dore cedars that are going to be removed. These are purely where, you know, it's under what we call a development tree that we planted there as part of an early development in the 70s. And, you know, and so, again, inhibiting future development of potential on the site.
Got it, all right. Okay, any other discussion? Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll get it to Sire and put it to vote. All right, I just have one comment. I just want to say, hey, look, we do need more facilities. If you look at the storage facilities, if you tried to get a storage facility recently, there's not a lot of capacity in the marketplace. So thank you for proposing this project. And of course, this place needs some modernization, so glad that you're putting some reinvestment back into Cupertino. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for the design features that are in place that hopefully are considered of our neighbors. And I'm assuming the normal processing for permitting and notification was put into place, so that's the assumption there.
Yeah. For a change, it's good to get a proposal, but doesn't require exceptions and so on. You know, ideally, we'd want all construction to be like that, because those are the ones where things get so contentious. So thank you for sticking to what the plan says and what the audiences say.
Okay, with that, let's put it to vote. Sire, please do the honors.
Commissioner Capil? Commissioner Madhipatla?
Yes.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
Vice Chair Scharf?
Aye.
Chair Wong?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, congratulations, so.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. I really appreciate it.
And happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you.
Good luck.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, let's move on to item number three. Discuss potential city work program proposals for fiscal year 2022, 2023. The recommended action here is recommend potential city work program proposals for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and identify the top three proposals limited to no more than five. Let's go to staff report. Pugh, all yours.
Thank you, Chair Wong. I actually do not have a presentation on this item, but this is the commission's chance to propose work program items for the director and city manager's consideration. And we're gonna, you know, once we get the commission's proposals, those will be considered when preparing the city's work program. And then if any of the planning commission's items are not included in that work program that is proposed to the city council, in any case, that list will still be provided to the city council for its consideration when developing the final city council adopted work program. So this is a chance for the commission to discuss what it wishes to have and to prioritize those, you know, top three, I believe, items.
Thank you. I've had a chance to talk to probably about 100 residents. This is probably what's on the top of the mind. We've been very resident-focused. Number one is to get our act together on this 5G cell ordinance from an architectural perspective. That seems to be the number one vote from almost every single person I have talked to. Number two, let's get some clarification on the second-story balcony and what that means and, you know, how big that is. And here's an interesting third one that I've been hearing from residents is, can we change the second floor, second story to first story floor area ratio? Our use, I understand the bulk consideration conversation about having a second floor, second story permit, but we got birthday cakes that look ridiculous, and people want to be able to go straight up on a sure wall in some areas, but at least have the architectural features to reduce the bulk. So those are the three things I got here, and I don't know if anyone else has any other things to add. Oh, I have a fourth one, but that, Vice Chair Scharf might hate me for that, but people want the natural gas ban removed, but that's another story. I get a lot of resistance on that one, but I like cooking natural gas, but some people have been saying that. Anybody else? Vice Chair Scharf?
I agree completely about the whole balcony issue. This keeps coming back to us, and even when we don't like a balcony, we really don't have any power to reject a balcony that is in compliance. And I think we really do need some kind of balcony ordinance or guidance. And I also agree with your ratio of first to second floor. I don't think it should be 100% second floor, first floor, but I think it, I think it could go a little higher than it is now.
We could go to 70 maybe, but not 90, not 100. I know what you're saying.
Right.
We'll get there, so.
And I think it has gone up a little.
Yes.
Wasn't it 35% at one point, and now it's 50?
Yeah, people have those, like, weird master bedrooms on the second floor.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Pugh, sorry.
Oh, Pugh, yeah, go ahead.
I'll answer some of those questions. It used to be 35%. You could get just a building permit. You did not have to have any kind of permits issued by the city in order to build that. If you went above 35%, you had to get what was called a residential design review permit, which went to the design review committee, and that was only up to a maximum of 45%. You could not go above 45%. Then that changed to the second story to first story ratio is 45%, but you need a two-story permit from the city to do that. And I believe in 2011, it changed from the 45% to what is now the 66%. So if you get a 66, if you are under 66%, you get what is called a two-story permit in order to, and when there's no design review on a building that is 66% second to first ratio. If you are over 66%, you get what is called a residential design review, still a two-story permit, but you have to go through architectural review and consideration. But you could go all the way up to 100%. There is no limitation on that, so I did want to point that out.
Oh, great, okay, so you can go to 66 without having to get the design review, is what you said?
Correct. And anything above that, you do design review, but there is no limitation on what percent. So you could do 100% if you wanted to.
Right, okay, yeah, I mean, it seems like 66 is not that unreasonable. Maybe it can go to 70, but, okay, and then?
I know, I know, you should be fighting for that extra 4%, I was kidding.
Okay, and then your third thing, your third thing you brought up was the 5G cell. And yes, that's been an issue for a long time. I know, I mean, I recall when we decided to design that streetlight pole because the alternative was the cellular carriers could just hang an ugly box on a pole, and we would have no power to deny it. But, yeah, we should look at what other cities have done, keeping in consideration which other cities have been sued for what they've done. Right, I know it has been a big issue for many residents that don't want 5G cells close to their homes. The other thing, unrelated to any of those, and I don't know if this can be a work plan item, but I don't know how many of you saw the December 6th Mercury News article about Cupertino. So what concerned me about that was not the, did someone mute themselves there? So the SB 9 part, I mean, there was a lot of errors in that article, but what I was dismayed about was that we don't seem to be, it seems like we need more code enforcement of substandard living conditions for tenants. Nobody should have to live in a place that was described in that article with rats and mold and leaky pipes. And I know we do have rules for that in our city code, but I don't think that they're hard, that they're enforced, and I don't think a lot of tenants are even aware that they have these rights to require that the property owner make necessary repairs. So I would like some work plan item that does some kind of outreach to renters that explains to them their rights to safe living conditions. And that's it, thanks.
Well, thanks for that, Vice Chair Scharf. Commissioner Saxena, you've got your hand raised, and Commissioner Madhipatla. And then we'll go to public.
I wanted to revisit something which I brought up earlier, is about how planning decisions impact schools. Okay. You know, as you probably know, CUSD is shutting down schools, even though we have one of the highest per-school density in the area. We have schools which run almost 1/3 of the classes in affordable classrooms. And with the new housing allocation and other elements coming, I feel it's absolutely critical, even more critical than 5G or something, that we figure that out, that what exactly should be the planning policy to make Cupertino schools viable. Schools are what, in a lot of ways, drive a lot of people to Cupertino. I think they're world famous, they're known all over the world. And to learn that we have among the lowest per-person funding in CUSD across the country, and definitely after adjusting for cost of living, was a big shock to me. And clearly, we didn't end up in this space, not because of some kind of decisions made over the past decades, which made our tax base completely incompatible or not diverse enough and not rich enough to fix the, to support the number of children coming to our schools. I'm glad we have two attorneys from Berkeley here who can help us figure out how to get the square foot-based parcel tax pass. I know they didn't do it directly, but they probably know about the whole issues. But I do want to understand the school generation ratios of single-family versus multifamily, owner occupied versus rental, and track them so that we can guide our planning decisions. I brought this up before, but I wasn't even sure what work order it comes in or what part we do it. And it's complicated even further by the fact that CUSD actually stretches across three, four different cities. But, you know, it's still Cupertino Union School District. I think we are the heart and soul of the district. So it's probably important enough for us to start taking action so that we can mitigate the impact of that and take smart planning decisions. So Chair Wong, you'll have to guide me or the staff on how we're going to do it, but I think it's high time we do it.
It's a proposal, so you're making a proposal so that we study that, and I think that's, this is the first part of that process to do that. I will also include the Fremont Union High School District in that too, not just CUSD as well. I mean, that would be the conversation point where a generation?
Definitely. I mean, I think CUSD is much bigger, I mean, causing more cities. And CUSD is compacted in a much bigger state compared to CUSD. CUSD is shutting down schools, even though they have the highest number of students per school in the entire region. So, which is like so counterintuitive, and we need to fix that. And at least we need to start taking steps to not make the problem much worse than before.
Okay, yep, this is the first step to doing that. Commissioner Madhipatla, and then back to Vice Chair Scharf. You've got your hands raised. Oh, and you're muted, Commissioner Madhipatla.
Thank you. So I have a couple of things that now I just want to talk about. So one, the schools, right? So certainly now, every development in the city affects, you know, schools in some way, right? So what I'd like to see is, you know, an assessment or a score that says, you know, this is a net positive development or net negative development for, you know, the other services. Like, for example, like, I did some analysis earlier on, you know, how much tax is going to schools, you know, from ownership homes, which is, you know, on an average, to, you know, what's going from, you know, the rental banks, right? There's a huge difference, right? Just on the parcel tax, right? For every unit where we are paying, you know, $250, the ownership homes, irrespective of the type of home, whether it's, you know, condo or, you know, townhome or, you know, or a single-family home, we all pay $50. But the residential, I mean, the rentals pay, you know, $1 per unit, right? And similarly, you know, for the property tax, right? On average, yeah, home contributes to, you know, roughly around $3,500 towards CUSD, irrespective of the type of home, right? And so if you have, you know, one kid for every three homes, you know, then, you know, you can fund it, all your kids' education in the city, right? So because 3,500 multiplied by three, you know, we get, you know, $10,000, you know, so going towards CUSD. Rentals, they pay $500 per unit. So if you take into consideration all these factors, now every development, you know, it's a net positive to the community or net negative, right? Take, for example, you know, Oaks development. Originally, the way it was proposed would have been a net negative development for the city. The way it turned out is a net positive, right, if we do the analysis, right? So we need to look at, you know, every development in that context, because in the long run, we'll all be gone, right? 20, 30 years from now, right? We want, you know, the city infrastructure and the elements, you know, that make the city. You know, this development shouldn't become a burden on that. So I'd like to see, you know, some study on, like, you know, is this development, you know, net positive to the community or net negative? So that's one. The second topic, I was just looking at, you know, my home, right? So from, I have solar panels, right? I have a lot of capacity. Like, in summer, I generate around, you know, 60 kilowatt per day, right? In winter, I'm doing, you know, 10 kilowatt per day. That's because how the panels are placed and where they are, right? So even though my home is south-facing, I couldn't nearly have, you know, all the panels on south side because, you know, the lot of, you know, vents, right? So I was wondering, you know, if we can do some kind of, you know, I don't know if it's a code or a study that says, you know, here is your, you know, solar score for the new houses, right? So where we kind of, you know, encourage, you know, solar-friendly, you know, kind of a development. Because in future, we want, you know, the city and, you know, every residence to be self-sufficient, right? I put on a lot of panels, you know, because I want to be self-sufficient. I don't want to be, you know, reliant on PG&E. But the panels are, you know, all on the north side, because on south side, you know, even though my home is facing south side, I couldn't put the panels on south side because of, you know, the vents. So can? So can designs be done in a way where we have, you know, a lot more, you know, solar exposure on the south side? But no, there is a a lot of generation, so to make the homes, you know, self-sufficient. Something to kind of, you know, think about and study and, you know, and make it some kind of part of code or something in future.
That's a great point, Commissioner Madipatla. There's a there's a algorithm, actually, that's been created to optimize solar energy capture of residential roof designs. Um, so um I can't remember where where I read that uh research article, but there is something out there and people can apply that as as they're looking at roof designs going forward, so.
Yeah, so so could we, you know, encourage that or, you know, make it as part of, you know, hey, we we want to see this, right, in your design submissions, right?
Very cool. All right, thank you. Uh Vice Chair Sharf, anything more to add before we go to public comment?
Yes, um, so what the two other commissioners mentioned regarding school enrollment. You know, one of the ways that this needs to be addressed is in our housing element um for the next RENA cycle. Um, where we decide or where we encourage property owners to um take arena out of, you know, uh apply for their land to be turned into housing. That it should be considered what the impact will be on the schools. Now, the reality is only one school in Cupertino, I believe, is closing Regnar. The other schools closing are outside of Cupertino. We don't really have any control, except we could encourage San Jose that perhaps their housing element should take into account the need for more homes for families with school-aged children. Uh, so I think the housing element, that should be part of the study and it's going starting right now. And the other thing about solar, uh one reason people, you know, want to live in a single-family home is they can be pretty much energy self-sufficient. Plus, they can have a garden. And it's great to see like the Oaks, the row houses and townhomes because they probably have enough roof space to be self, to ha- have enough solar panels to be self-sufficient. But when you go to a, you know, twenty-story building, you're not going to have enough roof space. You're going to be dependent on the utilities uh for your energy use, which is something we probably want to discourage. Uh, just because of where we're going in terms of climate change. We really need to be smarter about the way we do um our choices for new housing. Thank you.
Yeah, no, great point. And the twenty-six-year-old program to get rid of, uh to actually encourage solar panels, I think those benefits are actually being reduced um going forward. That's a proposal that's out there in the.
Yes, I saw that.
So, okay, great. Let's go to our public. Uh Jennifer Griffin, you've got uh three minutes and uh let's see what your ideas are.
Uh, thank you. Um, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and you all had some interesting discussions. First of all, I'm going to start out about the um the wedding cake houses. Um, those are very, very important for small family, for small lots. I mean, when you're talking about five thousand fifty-five hundred square foot lots, I'm a real big fan. It they happen to wind up that way with the wedding cake because we did require second-story setbacks. Because when you have a home that's three to four feet from the property line that goes straight up thirty-five feet, which is what I have on one side, there is zero privacy for both uh families. Um, thi- this is what was happening in Cupertino prior to Rancho's annexation in two thousand. Um, yes, there are areas that have larger lots, but I really do not want to see any elimination of the second-story setbacks. Um, it, you don't want to have thirty thirty-foot vertical runs. I mean, we're, God knows what SB nine and SB ten are going to be coming, you know, dragging in to the neighborhoods once, whether they get, I don't know. I mean, I don't even want to go into that. Four feet from the property line, all four sides of the lot, vertical runs, nobody, how can you have a second-story setback on an SB nine or SB ten project? I mean, complete disaster land. So at this point, the the wedding, the house is wound up with the wedding cake design because of the need to have second-story setbacks. You have more privacy for neighbors. Um, and it it's a Pew is very, very familiar with the battles over this. And yes, it started at thirty-five and now it's gone up. And and I will say right now, I'm very happy with a lot of the homes that are being produced in Rancho Rinconada right now, which is primarily small lot. They're very lovely homes, beautiful design. Just such an asset to the neighborhood. Um, and we've had a few modern designs in. So I I I just balconies, okay, I won't go there. I I think that there probably needs to be some stuff looked into that. God knows what nine and ten are going to do with balconies, like you can build over your neighbor's fence. But we need to remember that there is a history of why we wound up with wedding cake houses and I I'm not, you know, that's just the, you know, if you have a large lot, okay, that's fine. But when you've got five thousand to fifty-five hundred square feet, you don't have a lot to deal with. And I I'm so scared now of what's going to happen when nine and ten come crashing into town. And I do think that nine and ten are, people are going to have to make sure that those people that are maximizing profit from their lots, that they contribute to the school. Um, I I it's not, if somebody's flipping their property and they're coming out with ten million dollars because they put in four four properties on their fifty-five hundred square foot lot, they sure as heck need to contribute to the school district. But then again, with the three stars. Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for your suggestions. Uh, we're also taking suggestions from the business community. See some people that could potentially put uh put some suggestions here as well, but uh if you do, please send an email to any one of the commissioners. Uh, if you've got an idea as well uh for work plan item, uh that would also help encourage our business community. Uh, and then, of course, um, looking forward to hearing any other comments, uh, you know, while you can. So uh please submit those and happy send them to the Planning Commission or Planning Department, planning@cupertino.org. Any other comments? Back to commissioners. Anything else you guys want to add as we close the public portion? Comment? Okay, uh, with that, uh, let's go to the next agenda item. Pew, is there anything else you want? Uh, just to make sure we're good.
Uh, actually, we did wish for the Planning Commission to prioritize the items, so I'm just gonna check to see if um I have everything and that if we're over the limit, then whether you wish to prioritize them in any order. I have seven items here, so uh the commission, if the commission would please prioritize their top. Let me see, three.
Can you give us the rundown again?
Yes, uh, this is what I caught, and I hope I caught them all, so bear with me. Um, I have five G uh ordinance. I have the second-story balconies, need a balcony ordinance or guidance, that's what I caught. Um, I am not sure if the commission still wished to address second-story to first-story limitations since there are none at this point. Um, outreach to renters to explain their rights to them. Um, how planning decisions impact schools. Um, we basically need to ensure that our planning policies make the school district viable. Uh, assessment or score in the net positive or net negative impact to services, particularly schools of a project. And then homes to be designed to maximize solar exposure for solar energy generation. So with the commission, did I miss any? And would the commission wish to please prioritize their top three? And and also, uh, the limit, the the number should be limited to five, the total number.
No, okay. Well, I mean, we we.
I can share my screen if it helps.
Does it, can you share? Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I I know two of them can be combined, like the the net negative, net positive development versus, you know, how their development impacts schools, that can have, you know, related.
Yeah, that's true. And and again, as I mentioned, some of this will be um just fall out of the housing element, hopefully, in terms of, you know, what we do for school enrollment. Um, but yeah, I think it's important enough to the community to be a separate item uh for schools. Uh, definitely the balconies and five G, I think would be my top three. If we could eat, maybe we could each do our top three.
Yep, let's do that. That sounds like.
So I would do five G balconies and schools.
Okay, and uh can you blow that up a little more? I think uh as I'm getting to a older age, I can't see anything anymore. So, let's do that.
You can hide the top bar.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
And um, yeah, we'll go to you, um, Commissioner Saxena. What are your top three?
Uh, schools, schools and schools, so.
Oh, you got three votes. There you go. You're sacking the system. That's a smart move, but uh, okay, what's your other two?
Okay, schools, um uh, can can we just scroll down to see the, so we have, uh, I just see okay, schools, then uh second-floor balcony and solar.
Hang on one sec, let me just see second-floor balcony. So I got one commissioner. I'm sorry if I missed anybody else.
Myself.
Okay, and your choices were?
So uh mine, um, schools for sure, the impact of development on schools.
Uh, would that be your top priority, Commissioner?
Yeah, that that's my number one, right? And uh number two would be, you know, the some kind of a solar scoring mechanism for the new developments in Cupertino.
When you say a scholar, solar scoring mechanism, what are you just trying to maximize? Because that's not what the.
Yeah, yeah.
Task says.
Yeah, the maximize, right? Like, you know, we we want all new developments to maximize solar exposure, solar energy generation, right?
Yeah, I I think uh the way, if I understood correctly, Muni, you had pipes sticking out of the roof and they couldn't put solar panels there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There are pipes everywhere on the south side of my house, so I can't put solar panels there. So all of my panels are on the north side, so uh in.
You don't have maximum generation, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think it's more like a design guideline than anything else.
Yeah.
I would I would say that as um design guidelines to maximize maximize solar production capacity.
Yeah, uh, potential.
Or potential, potential.
So I I I produce sixty kilowatt in summer, in winter I produce ten kilowatt.
Yeah, no, I I I designed my roof, my house, current house to do thirty-nine solar panels at maximization. And and we did roof maximization to do that when we put up our house, so that was part of the intent, so, including pitch and.
Uh, Commissioner Madipatla, your number three?
Uh, my number three, I'm just trying to see, you know.
Five G, five G, just kidding.
So, okay, I'll go with five G because that's the.
Actually, uh, uh, Pew, if you will allow, I will also save, uh, move my balcony to five G.
Well, we can choose five items, just so you know.
Uh, the top three, you know, I I'm saying my vote for the balcony to five.
Okay, oops, that's not.
Oh, that's a strong two.
That's a strong two. This is the, this is the worst. This is like backseat driving, like watching someone use Excel. I mean, so we'll be kind.
To ignore.
We will be kind, we'll be.
At least we're not trying to write a letter using five people at the same time.
Yeah, no, who'd think of doing that in a public setting? Just kidding.
Vice Chair Sharf, your.
Oh, so mine, balconies, because we spend such an inordinate amount of time in the planning commission on balconies. Um, and then I will also do five G and schools.
So, okay, and then, uh, Chair Wong?
Uh, one is five G, two is schools, and three is balconies for me.
Okay, so I am looking at this with five G is definitely an interest uh from the planning commission. Uh, say that ranks number one in the planning commission.
Schools, I thought schools had everything.
Well, some people ranked it as three. Um, but that's.
We get five, we get five to rank, so schools probably looks like it's two.
You rank um three and you get two additional.
Okay.
Unranked. So, um, and then I, between balconies and um solar homes, I see balcony getting three and one and solar uh panels getting three and two.
You can just use a sum function to do it, so.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Well, I think we could just use the the Excel sum function to tally up the votes, so that's okay.
You're gonna help me with that one.
Um, so next to insert, um, so I go next to insert, there's a little thing that looks like an E, the sigma, the summation. Yeah, click on that and drag uh to uh sell G's, G three and just scroll away to sell G uh two or something like that.
Okay, you want me to select it all?
Yeah.
Yeah, so select the row.
This is, we're doing backseat Excel driving.
Here, I selected the row.
Okay, and then do.
We have to hit summation first and then select the row.
All right. Is that all you?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's perfect. Hit return.
Enter, yes!
And then hit copy paste, and hit copy paste all the way down, you're good.
No, 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 she's doing it right. You can just drag it down.
You can drag it too, you can drag it too. All right, let's go with the lowest numbers. Is that how it works?
I guess there's a top between five G and school.
I'm just kidding, guys.
So I'm going to, um.
Now, I will say this, when somebody said one, they said that that was their first choice, not.
Number one priority, yeah.
Yeah, so because when you do a sum function here, you're adding your top choices, right?
So what we should do is we put, uh, if we said one, it should count as three, if you say two, it counts as two, if it's, you say three, it counts as one, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna set it.
I think, you know, we should go with, you know, the one, the ones that have, you know, the maximum number of votes. Like if all four of us have voted for something, then that means something, right? So and then if you have a tie between those two, let's see, you know, which ones had, you know, the higher party. Like this one was a number two for everybody, which is the other one that had, you know, uh, most votes, right? So scroll down.
Schools and five G look like they're tied, so.
Schools and five G are tied, so those are your top two, and I guess it's it's very close between balconies and solar. So did you wish to consider which one you'd like to pick?
So so I, given that, you know, the schools had, you know, uh, number one ranked somewhere, uh, I would put the school, two two words for uh the schools is not three, right?
Uh, they they ranked it number one, but in terms of weighted, I gave it three, right? Because it weighed them.
Okay, so I I would put, you know, schools as, you know, the number one priority, given the voting. And five G as a number two, number three.
Are you changing votes after the election? What's going on here?
No, no, I think he has some good points.
No, he's got a good point, I'm just kidding.
Balconies affect a relatively small number of residents, but schools and five G.
I'm I'm happy making, I'm happy making um ba- uh making schools number three and having balconies as the extra bonus one, so I'm okay with that. I think that's, we have a consensus.
Okay, so I'm gonna highlight the ones just so I know. And we're all clear, so that's one of the three, that's two of the three, and this is three of the three.
I believe that's.
Okay, and then if you had two unranked choices, I'm guessing solar would be an unranked choice.
Yep.
I'm gonna use a different color here. And then what other, I'm assuming that you do not want to add second story to first story limitations to that because we already have that addressed.
Yeah, uh, uh, yeah.
So I'm gonna take that out unless anybody has any objections or has something.
I'm fine taking that out. I mean, you're gonna, I mean, I understand the uh setbacks. You have setbacks on second stories anyways, so.
Now, I did add that we do have existing uh work program items that are not completed and that are rolling over as well. So which were provided in your packet, so I did want to um add those out uh for your, you know, for you to think about. Because these are also part of the work program, so the three that you're prioritizing are not going to just be added to these, but they're going to be considered in the grand scheme of everything else that staff is working on.
Well, I it is the objective standards are probably top of mind, but those should be done by now, right?
They're ongoing, I guess, is what I would say.
Okay, so I'm sure they'll be there. I'm sure they'll be there.
We live and learn and we're we're, you know, they keep evolving a little bit at time. Um, there is, um, the the housing element continues to be a pretty big um work program item for us. Um, it's a heavy weight, a heavy-weighted item for us because it has to be completed by a certain date and um state laws. by a certain date and, um, state law also requires us to do additional outreach, which shortens our timeline even further. Um, so that all has to be done in twenty twenty-two pretty much. Um, we also have the residential and mixed-use residential design standards, which I know the community had a big interest in seeing in the, in the interests of objective standards because that is what we would look to when a project comes in, to make sure that people would, uh, meet those objective design standards. So just making sure the commission is aware of the other items that would potentially roll over.
Um, yeah, I think we should actually, um, uh, do a reprioritization of all the rollover items, uh, against items we have.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna add these to the list then, just so we, um, the housing element is required by law, so I'm not gonna add that here, but I do wanna the commission to keep that in mind when considering what items you add to the list. We have nine ordinance update. Yeah, I, um, that's frozen, I don't know what to put down here. Um, development accountability. So thoughts from the commission on the ones that I've added in here? And I'm gonna put the housing element in here in caps.
I, I assume the housing element's gonna go through anyway, so I'm, like, it's, it's kind of a requirement.
That's a requirement, we have to do it and it is very staffy, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I personally want to make sure the school gets, uh, funded this year. Okay, that's my, as I said, my number one, two and three priority, so.
What do you mean when you wa, you said you wanted to make sure the schools get funded this year?
The school, okay. Uh, I think there was, I didn't intend to fund, but like, the work program funds the school study, so we can make sure the school gets funded.
That's fine, I'm, I'm looking at the list from last year and, man, I can't see anything that we would wanna take out from that list.
I, I think, um, the way I would put it, I want this work on the school also to start this year and not wait for everything else to be finished. Uh, as Pew shared, you learn and, uh, it did on the way. So the process will continue, uh, but I think for the schools, it's high time we took some decisive action to.
I'm trying to understand why we only have five and how these projects get prioritized, but maybe we, we have to lobby the city council to say, hey, we need some more. So, I mean, that's, that's really.
Yeah, if I had fifteen more planners to work on this, I promise we'd get everything done.
No, understood, understood. I mean, am I, go ahead.
I mean, I personally feel that, like, the school understanding project is some, is research and data heavy, and we should probably offer internships, something, uh, to get somebody to work on those, collect the data, do some analysis. Uh, I feel that, that way we involve the community also, uh, we offer, uh, our younger generation the chance to become a participant in the civic research and decision process. And I'm sure, uh, it's going to throw up some very interesting findings. So, you know, in terms of getting funding, getting extra planners or resources to feel, uh, I'm very supportive of that, so. I don't know if the, uh, planning office of the city actually has an intern program, but if not, we should consider it.
And I, I don't mean to sound like I, this is not something I wish to work on, but I do want to, uh, address one issue is that this data is collected by the school district and city does not really have access to this data. They don't provide us with specific data on generation. Um, we, we, you know, we in, in the past and continue to do this, is with our projects, we look, we have a school report, a school impact report prepared, um, and that is provided with projects such as, uh, a general plan update and things like that. Uh, but in terms of specifics, we do not have that access to the data.
Yeah, I get the concern, I, how can you generate a report without having access to the past history? Uh, so, I mean, you can cook up number from anything you want, but let's figure out what happened in the past. Uh, so, uh, and if you have to lobby with the CUST board to get the data out, we should. Uh, but like, uh, it's a problem which needs a solution because we pretty much can't go down much further than where we are already. So if you don't do it now, I don't know when are we going to do it. So if it requires more partnership with CUST, uh, let's, let's do that.
Well.
Yeah.
You, you know, in the past, the data has kind of been, what's the nice way to put it? It's kind of been suspect based on, um, political considerations that have happened at the school district. So, you know, data we get from them, you take it with many grains of salt because it's been prepared with a certain agenda in mind.
Yeah. So we, I want access to raw data that people can crunch, uh, without any. Yeah. Um, Commissioner, uh, um, um, Chair Wong, we'll have to figure out a way to get it, but I want raw data for the past twenty-five years and I want people to get down and crunch it. Because otherwise, uh, it's all, um, you know, smoke and.
Well, yeah, the, the state has deliberately ob, obfuscated the data and not provided it in any transparent form. The schools districts have also hidden that data, um, so there is a conspiracy here, uh, that is ridiculous. I mean, we should know how much goes to the state, how much gets brokered out to everybody else, um, and by property, right? And that, that can all be scrubbed. You don't have to give out addresses for it, whatever excuses they've given, that's just ridiculous. So I agree with you. Um, I don't know if we can solve it in this, but, uh, back to our, our, our main, your main item is really how do we prioritize the items that we want to present to council, which makes those decisions, I believe in January for the work plan program, prioritization? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And this is our last meeting of the year, so just so, so we're clear. So, um, I don't know why we only have five items, um, that are there, but, uh, we do need to put in objective standards. I think council will probably push for that anyways, um, in order to handle the onslaught of legislation that's been coming through, uh, to make sure that we're protected. So that's one I would massively lobby for. Um, I'm happy supporting the schools and the five G. I think those are probably, um, a lot of concerns from the residents on the five G one. Um, and so I'm ha, happy to support you guys on the schools one. So, so that's, that's where I'm at and I assume the other ones will, will probably happen because they're ongoing. Um, but, but I'm, I'm happy to lobby for more, um, which hopefully gets you more staffing, Pew, so.
Yep.
Um, have we given you what you needed, um, Pew?
Um, I have schools, objective standards.
Five G.
Five G. And then second story balconies and solar. Is that the five? Do you?
Uh, I, assuming that the housing element's included in that.
Housing element is required by law, so we'll have to look at our staffing and see what we can do, whether we can even do those five or not. I mean, it's, it, it will just have to evaluate all our options, but yes, the housing element is included.
Okay. All right. And, yeah, and I, I would assume, uh, design guidelines would, yeah, might, might be something there, so. Okay. Does everyone, is that okay? Do we have a consensus on that?
Uh, would, would somebody like to, to make a motion to give, um?
Do we need a motion for this?
Um, I, I, I think a motion would be helpful, so it's, 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 the record is.
Properly recorded?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll easily make a motion to, um, prioritize and submit new work plan items along with the existing ones with, um, with top three being objective standards, uh, schools, uh, five G and, uh, did I, I'm missing something? Balconies, uh, and then I think there's one for, is it design standards? Or, yeah, I think it's design standards. With the assumption that housing element is an ongoing project that will be going on all next year. Um, that's my motion, so. Is there a second?
A second?
Okay, cool. Any other discussion? All right. Call vote for this.
Commissioner Capil? Commissioner Mahdi Patla?
Yes.
Commissioner Saxena?
You mouthed something, we didn't hear you, so go ahead.
Oh, you didn't, you can't, you can't hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, yes. Mm-hmm.
Vice Chair Sharp?
Aye.
Chair Wong?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. This is why we have city attorney, thank you. So, all right. Um, okay, we'll move to our next agenda item, uh, which is really, uh, I don't think we have, do you have any staff and commission reports?
No, no staff reports. I just did want to remind the, uh, commission that we will be reviewing the, uh, work, uh, the city's annual report, uh, sometime early next year. Um, so just wanted to, uh, remind the commission to look at the last work program, uh, not work program, but the annual report, um, to remind themselves of how that is done. And then, um, also, um, that we will probably be coming back for a housing element, um, i, item or hearing sometime early next year. So please, um, we, we provided certain links, uh, earlier, uh, this year. You would, uh, review those links to kind of understand what the housing element is about.
Okay. All right. Any commission reports? Okay. Um, anything on the future agenda setting? Oh, wait, oh, Commissioner, Vice Chair, sir, go ahead.
No, I did, don't know if everyone saw that ABAG did issue the final, the final, final RENA numbers and nothing changed for any city in Santa Clara County. I think the only county that had any changes was Contra Costa County. So the number that we learned about earlier this year is what we are going to have to do in our housing element and be very challenging.
Okay. Lovely. All right. Uh, anything else? If, any future agenda items? If not, I think our next meeting is actually in January. Do we have a date for that? Just making sure, uh, so everybody knows, January eleventh, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, with that, happy holidays, everyone. Please stay safe and, uh, you know, this is the adjournment of the City of Cupertino's, uh, planning commission meeting for December fourteenth. Bye, everybody, take care.
Happy holidays.
Happy, happy holidays.